We'll call a meeting to order. Uh, welcome to the joint Ramsey County Commission, Double Lake City Commission, and Law Enforcement Commission meeting. I guess, uh, before we get started, I'd like to just go around the room and, uh, welcome everybody and introduce, uh, have everybody introduce themselves so, uh, everybody knows not only who is here in person, but who's online. Um, so I guess I will start, uh, and maybe you go around this way or that way. Uh, but I'm Jeff Frith, I'm the Ramsey County Commission Chairman.
Wayne Gold.
Lucas Wakefield, Ramsey County Commissioner.
Rob Hatch, City Commissioner.
Dale Rahn, City Commissioner.
Jack Paul, City Commissioner.
Dick Johnson, City Commissioner, Mayor of Denny.
Adam Lepin, Land Commission.
Hannah Christofferson, Ramsey County Attorney.
Rob Johnson, Director of the Law Enforcement Center.
Ed Brown, Ramsey County Commissioner.
I have Paul Cummings, I'm the Ramsey County State Senator.
And we do have several in the audience for those that are online. And you can start back here.
Amber Root, Operations Manager at the Police Center. Emily Jager, Secretary of State of the Department.
I'm Tim Mark, Deputy Nelson County Commissioner, Law Enforcement Commissioner.
Howard Swanson, Legal Counsel to the Law Enforcement Center.
Ian Horst, Ian Nelson, Ramsey County Attorney. Jim Jay, San Francisco. Facilities Director of the Law Enforcement Center.
Bill, Administration. Sarah Breton, Lieutenant, Public Affairs. I mean, we're losing our district attorney, it's the Law Enforcement Center.
Howard Johnson, Attorney General, Department of Justice.
Harry Johnston, City Attorney. Attorney, what, City Attorney?
Uh, Chip Johnson, of the Press.
All right, welcome everybody.
Do you want me to give them to live?
Yeah.
Uh, Dave, go ahead.
Uh, Dan Burd, City County Commissioner, LEC Board.
Joni. So we also have Joni Hopeland on, she is the Information Officer, Law Enforcement Center.
Great, glad to have everybody along. So we're here to discuss the ownership of the building, the joint, uh, powers agreement, and, uh, discussion of property is, if this evolved, uh, who gets what, kind of thing, uh, this whole, eh, kind of came to a halt when we were redoing our joint powers agreement for the Law Enforcement Center. And the original one that went back to cooperative agreement between Ramsey County and the city of Double Lake, uh, been several years since that's been looked at, I guess, so. Uh, Rob, I don't know if you wanna go ahead and start the process that we've been going through.
Yeah, so, uh, we started roughly a year ago, uh, trying to draft some joint powers agreement to update the existing, what we currently have for the Law Enforcement Center. Uh, through the process, we came up with the, the document that we shared with all the commissions. Uh, really at this point on the joint powers agreement, we're at the point where we want to get the feedback to see if this is gonna be acceptable file document, or if there are adjustments or changes that we need to make to it based off of the membership's wants and needs. Um, so I, that's kind of where we're at with the joint powers agreement. One of the things that we do need to do and define that's not done within the joint powers agreement is the physical structure and the ownership and how the, whether it's a lease agreement or something for the Law Enforcement Center with the city of Double Lake and Ramsey County, uh, and just how that process is gonna work and who actually owns the fund, so. Uh, I think that's kind of the, the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish today.
Can anybody interpret how the original one is written? As far as, is there anything in there that says who owns what or anything like that? Basically, they just say the city and the county own it. Is that simple enough? The rationale document?
Yeah, I, it's, you know, we, we've started to go through the abstracts and stuff because there's an official property, kind of a theme, since their agreement. And I, I just, I don't know, I don't know who, what, how that would, how that agreement would apply to those other assets. And that's where I think we need to, you know, there's some other things we need to try and define.
I do believe the board, uh, the deed says that Ramsey County and City of Double Lake own the property building, F and F, which also be the RRC. So that's, that's registered.
Okay, so if that's as simple as, as, uh, that, the question is, any assets that are acquired going forward? In the past, it was just the city and the county. The assets were pretty simple, it's the city and county ownership. But going forward, we're asking the other counties to contribute to some of the purchases we make. I think that was part of the, uh, the thought that we needed to have discussion on is, in my mind, again, Ed, you said this at one meeting, it's not going anywhere. The, the, the LEC, the jail's not going anywhere, so really shouldn't even need to have a discussion, but we're having the discussion just to get it on document and then on paper, I believe, that's. Um, so, I, if, if that's a starting point, I mean, say we purchase a new, um, security system that we put in a couple years ago, it was about eight hundred thousand dollars. Each entity contributed X amount of dollars to something that was hap- some of the happen, and there was some value to that, which I can't see where there would be, but say there was some value to that, would we have to negotiate who gets what if there is value to it? Or is it just, do we write it as you contributed, there is no ownership after the contribution? Uh, that's the path I'm going down, I don't know if anybody would say it differently. This is one of the discussions.
Mr. Chairman, I, absolutely, please do it.
Good morning, I'm Howard Swanson. In addition to comments you've identified, the original agreements don't really address who's responsible for initiating or carrying out things that have improvements. You need to new growth on that building? Who goes about doing that? Who's responsible for paying for it? The original agreements that I reviewed have been amended multiple times, but there's never been a comprehensive reright. So what you have before you was the contributive, you need to consider that as a general draft. It's a preliminary draft, it's not, I don't think it's yet in a position to be finalized, but it didn't seek to address the building issues. It really was addressing management and operation of the LRLAC, and also the board that's governing. But, so in addition, I, I agree with the mayor's comment as to, on a title, who owns it, but that doesn't really lead us down the path very far saying, okay, if these issues occur as the building ages, how do we deal with those? And I think those are some issues that Rob and I have talked about that need to be addressed, and we felt that that was outside the scope of the Law Enforcement Center board. I don't know if that adds anything more, but, thank you.
Yeah, because there's two joint powers agreements. There's a joint powers between the five entities that are on the board for the LRC, and then the one we're supposed to be looking at today is just the joint powers between the city and county, I believe. It, it's, so for instance, in the past, discussion has been had that we have to improve something at the Law Enforcement Center. The, the conversation is what, that the city and the county have to approve any capital improvements at the law, at the jail, I'll use the jail as a term. So what is that, that's written in the original agreement? Okay, so going forward, is that something we need to still have identified in the agreement? Or is it something that, is, is the city and the county responsible for improvements? Or is the, the jail board responsible for the improvements?
Well, if the city and the county are then being responsible for capital improvements, then instead of us getting Ramsey County building, we own the LRC, should we pay us?
And, and that's part of the conversation we're looking at.
I had never been figured out why the city and county have to pay that kind of building we own. If you guys have a house there, you should be paying the rent to us. And then split up and generate incarceration fees, then it'd be split up amongst all of them, almost.
So.
I think there's one thing we should get straight right away. There's such a thing as commercial property, then there's such a thing as community-owned property. The community-owned property, what I'm talking about is state, county, city. I mean, we need a jail. County needs one, the city needs one. And I think we need to address it in that manner, that we own it jointly. We don't want to hand tie future commissions here with some agreement that we, right now, where they can't make agreements. They can't sit down at a table and make agreements. The good function and the move forward of the law enforcement center. We need to let it function, we need to let it operate, you know? And we don't want to hand tie any of the agreement that, uh, county pays this, city pays that. Ramsey could just, you're using it instead of your police forces in there, county sheriffs in there, they're using area in there, yeah, we own it. We're moving money back and forth probably to help the Law Enforcement Center create a profit. We'd like to see it make a profit. You know, but we need that jail, that's all we're doing.
Well, maybe it's time the county buys the city out, you guys run.
What do you want?
They're in place, it's half of the better.
You want out. Adam, you got a thought on that? We're afraid this is gonna, gonna come on the table, or.
Uh, praise and half of the value, I mean, how do you praise a physical structure building like a prison? There's nobody with expertise to.
Is that the feeling of the city commission?
If that was the half, I would say we just give it to you for a buck. Somebody else can do that. It's like, here it is, you can have it. I mean, it's kind of like giving away, kind of like giving away free money.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's no value.
Is that what you want?
I said, that's my feeling, I don't want the other commissioners, I just want.
Yeah?
Just giving you my feelings, honestly.
Ramsey County will have a jail, that's it. We're responsible for jail.
With, with that being said, we would relinquish any membership to the board, which would be probably a big plus for future operator, you don't say we didn't own it, type of thing? I don't see where we'd need to be on the board, I think saying we make the board operating less, we do without that.
I wouldn't say that at all. I wouldn't say that at all, Dale, I wouldn't, no. I'm not disgusted at how the Law Enforcement Center board goes, no I'm not. I think it goes real well, I deny one, one board goes real well. I just, let's not put an agreement together here, like I said earlier, that hand ties future commissions. We don't want to do that. So, your commission's gonna change, Ramsey County's commission's gonna change, we all know it's gonna change.
But, you know, you need an agreement, because to keep friends' friends, and I think I need to turn it up, tell you this, to keep friends' friends, put it in writing.
Yeah?
And otherwise, there's gonna be, you know, all kinds of, well, that wasn't the intent we had, that we, you know, we verbally agreed to that, but not, we go again, mean that. But again, I'm sure the attorneys agree, but to keep friends' friends, put it in writing so you have.
We have one, we've been using it.
Well, yes and no. Because, I mean, if we went by the, you know, by the original agreement, which hasn't been superseded by any other document back in seventy-three, that the LEC is supposed to submit a budget to the city and the county, and we approve it. They don't approve it on budget, we approve it, the city and the county. This is the agreement that's in effect right now. And things, you know, other things that representation on the board is addressed on here. Uh, ownership, of course, uh, but there's a number of things that's antiquated, but it's still in effect, doesn't change.
Hey, what do you want to do?
Well, I mean, that, that's.
You got ideas?
That's why we're here.
I just said, I think the agreement's working fine.
Well, is it? I hope we'll be here if it's working good.
Okay, what do you want to change?
Well, I mean, the thing is, a guy has.
Tell me what you want to change.
Okay, but no, you know, right now, if, if we give up our ownership and interest in there, then we're at the mercy of.
I don't want you to get, the city of Double Lake does not want you to get.
Whatever happens, whether it's by agreement, the joint powers, into joint powers, it's the new one that's been drafted. It says that the LEC draws up a board, or, excuse me, a budget, and they submit it. And that's the budget, we have to live by it. Both the county and the city and the other entities have to live by it. Um, so we're at, at the mercy of the, um, LAC board. Yeah, we have two representatives, but still, we're at the mercy of the LAC board. Now, we had a rent increase of eighteen thousand dollars this year, and we had no say into that. None, other than hit the board. And I believe it was eighteen thousand, wasn't it, Eric?
Probably a bit more than forty-eight thousand.
Oh, thanks.
Is that comparable to what commercial property renting for in Double Lake? I don't have any clue at all.
There, again, you got, you know, you've got a publicly owned building, and, you know, commercial rates are gonna be somewhat different than publicly owned building that's, has no debt, has nothing, I mean, you'd have to have somebody look at that, but, um, it, um, certainly getting a, a rate increase of twenty-eight hundred dollars, twenty-eight thousand dollars, if that's what it was, without any input from the city, that, that's not right. That's why these, the drafters of this year, they had, they had some thought back in seventy-three to prevent those types of things from happening. You know, and then I see the new agreement, the, you know, like if there's a shortage, that they can bill the agencies back according to the percentage of usage or something like that, but yet if there's an overage, they, they don't return that to the entities, they get to keep it for future whatever needs.
But I think we're going down the wrong path, we're talking about the joint powers agreement for the LEC when you talk there, Derek, or we, we want to visit both joint powers between the buildings, I mean, not the joint powers.
It's on here.
Oh, okay, Eric, was it, was the LEC one on here too then?
So I think, I think maybe we've got the cart before the horse here. That joint powers agreement for the physical property, as far as I know, as far as the county knows, has not been drafted yet. Today, it's the operational, and we're just opening discussions about what we'd like to see for the physical stuff going forward.
For the physical, yeah. But, and, and part of that covers, to get the physical, the LEC, the jail one in place, we thought we had to get the physical structure one taken care of before we could do the fine tuning on the LEC one. So the, the one thing that comes to my mind on the physical structure one is approving any capital improvements at the, at the jail. Right now, it says the city and the county have to approve anything we do there. In my mind, it's been that if the board has the money to make the improvements, why would we have to go back to the city and the county to get approval of it? Unless we had to ask them for money, that, that's one thing that Dick and I have conversated many times on. That's one thing I, I think could be changed, that if the center needs improvement and they have the money to do it, why can't the board make the decision as opposed to go back to the city and county and have them? That's one item that I see as been had with a thorn for many years.
Well, I think, yeah, another thing that has to be identified, what is a capital improvement once maintenance? Would you replace an existing, say, security system or whatever, is that maintenance? It should have been, you know, whatever, or is it a gap? Maybe a little bit of both.
Yeah, I don't.
Probably a little bit of both.
Or, or the lighting?
Or the lighting, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, then, of course, you can fix one thing, and the state seems to find something else.
Right, yeah, but we seem to have that redundant conversation every time, there's something that needs to be done, so I don't know if, if we can put clarification into an agreement or not.
You said the lighting, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
That we're doing now.
Yeah, we've talked about that, that, you know, if we're gonna do it, we need to get it approved before we prove the city and the county. And in my mind, if we're paying it forward internally, why do we need to get approval? We just need to get it day to day.
I guess, to my mind, and I don't sit on this board, but to my mind, I think you have to define that both the city and the county have two hats that we wear, right? We are both members of the LAC and owners of the property. Right, and then, and so I would look at it like one of the buildings that I own and rent. It'd be like saying, one of my tenants making improvements, even though they've got the money, they're not asking me for money, making changes to my building, I would still want to approve those. So, so to me, it's sort of, it's like, uh, saying that you need to come before the city and the county in their capacity as the owners of the structure to get approval to do those things. So I do see a distinction there, a reason that you would maybe want to come before those boards. But maybe I'm the only one that, that sees that value.
Really, if it's, if it's necessitated by the day-to-day operations of the facility, is, you know, and is needed for the building to operate correctly under the standards that the state has set forward, is it something that has to be approved? Is that a capital asset, a capital fixture that has to be approved by the city and county? Or is that something that approved by the Law Enforcement Center board?
Trying to sample the lighting right now, ready to, you want to tell us about that project?
Yeah, so we're just, we've got a jail, we're updating the lighting in our, uh, original portion of the jail. Uh, the, the current lighting doesn't meet the required standard by the, set by the Northern Department of Corrections. Uh, we have to hit twenty-foot camera movements, uh, at desk level, we're currently getting four in most of those areas. So, uh, it's gonna run us just short of seventy thousand dollars to have all the lighting updated.
It's original lighting, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So to, with what Jeff was saying, so one thing that, um, Rob has talked about in the future, maybe adding on a kitchen, possibly? So that might need your thought process, okay, so we're gonna add on a kitchen. That would probably be wise to come to the city and the county and say, we're gonna add on a kitchen to the jail. We need your approval to do that, that, which, we do want their approval, because we probably need funds to do it, most likely, but in my mind, something that we do have the funds to pay for, should just be, be able to be approved at the board level.
You know, on the other hand, you know, we're paying a user fee, I believe. And if, you know, it, when these relatively small expenditures, you know, seventy thousand, I mean, it's not small money, but it is a big figure. You know, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that come out of user fees? Because you're paying them anyway. I don't know if it goes for operations or where it goes, where the user fee gets put in an account. I don't, is it for operations or, because you're already kind of paying that, now you get to pay again. Uh, you pay the user fee so we can use the facility, and you would think it'd be the obligation of the board to give it lighting as much as possible.
The Law Enforcement Center is gonna pay for the lighting project, is that what your question is?
No, it's not, it, it just, you know, more of a state kind of question.
But the other, one of the things you're trying to resolve for the jail joint powers agreement was if there's assets to be divvied up and say something, I can't even come up with a situation where we wouldn't exist and we would liquidate, I can't even imagine that happening, but I just think it's silly to have to talk about it, but if we have to talk about it, put it in paper. Has anybody got an idea how we would do, do that? That's one of the things you want to resolve as well, was that Rob, it's like, okay, if there are assets that need to be.
Well, I think it's, you know, the likelihood of something like that happening, obviously, is minimal. Probably not going to ever happen, but it's still a plan that you need to be prepared for. So I think in the agreement that you're gonna be establishing, that would be something you want to refine. So if, and just to add a little bit as far as what I'm looking, what I think we need to do specifically is, because I'm looking for guidance, uh, as well, because there are multiple agreements that we're currently acting under historically, and, oh, uh, I understand that maybe we haven't been doing things the way that those agreements outline, so I'm looking to try and reevaluate those, redefine those so that we are doing things that we're that person. And so that's where I like this, to, this agreement specific to the property, to establish those, those expectations.
We're, we're talking specific tenant or, you know, or, or, but if, if you have a dissolution. I mean, it doesn't, shouldn't say it's easy to, to find, but it's, it shouldn't be that difficult. Because if the, if the, if the physical plant, the building, anything attached to the building, that's a physical plant, is owned by the city and the county, then you have to have a, essentially, all those things are fifty-fifty own. So i- it would be first write a refusal on if one entity wants to buy the building from the other one, and then maybe utilize it for something else. It would then be, if neither entity no longer wants to hold the building, then you would say, what can we get for it? And either piecemeal it off, or fifty-fifty for the whole thing, uh, whatever the profits are. And anything that's not attached to the building, then it would be dissolved because it was all paid for by LAC funds, and it would be parceled back out to the entities that are part of the others.
Good way to look at it.
Because anything like a medical cart or any of those things we've approved, they've all had operating funds go into them, the user fees, as you say. So Nelson County should get a small percentage of that back because they have a percentage of those user fees, as well as Eddie and everybody else that's involved. You know, vehicles, anything like that, that's all coming out of regular operational budget. But the building itself, it would be fifty-fifty, we would have to have it essentially written in the agreement that the conversation would have to happen between the city and the county. It's either you want to buy it from the other entity, essentially, and then if you don't, let's put a value on it, and whatever the proceeds become, fifty percent goes each way. At least that's my thought process, I don't know if that makes sense to anyone, that's what I meant.
That would, what happened if, in the future, they built a new jail? You want to go into that facility? That's how you would do it?
At least that's, that's what would be my, I mean, because I'm, I'm just looking, I don't know exactly how, like, for instance, uh, Morton and early when they built their jail, but Morton repurposed their facility and used it for something else, they already owned the facility, but it would be the same concept of, can we repurpose this facility for something else? Can, you know, can, or is it something we just want to walk from and, what can we get?
I think Adam's put it together for us.
The, the other thing that was, I'm beginning to go on my mind, talking about the concept of, of operational costs, or I should just say, maintenance versus capital improvements. To me, at least in my mind, capital improvements are anything that's changing the physical plant versus day-to-day maintenance. So if you're changing the lighting system, that's a capital improvement. But if you're putting a light bulb in, that's maintenance. Or if you have to run a little stretch of wire because something's wrong with the lights in the existing system, that's maintenance. But capital improvements are, you know, a roof, a new lighting system, uh, flooring, whatever you'd like to call it, would be a capital improvement, I guess, from my point. And, and how do you treat those separately or differently, I don't know. But I'm just saying, that's kind of where my thought process is, on, where the.
Don't agree with the hundred percent, couldn't put it in better words.
So maybe put another way, if you are fixing something to the property, making it a fixture, that's a capital improvement. Yes, that's how I would view it, because, uh, to me, it comes back to, it comes back to, uh, I'm not an accountant, obviously, but, you know, there's accounting principles for what's a physical asset versus what's not a physical asset. At the bottom, how it's always been described to me is if you can take a building, flip it upside down and shake it, anything that falls out is a capital improvement. Everything else that's attached to the building is part of the physical plant asset. So, so the maintenance of the building, though, is just day-to-day stuff, but anything that's big, I mean, and I don't think we want to necessarily delineate a dollar figure on something like that, but there's, uh, there's gotta be some way to define it, so, I mean, it's kind of like if it, if it looks like a dog, it's a dog, you know? We just know.
One question for you. Doesn't any political subdivision that has property, must they have to declare a surplus of their itself?
Yeah.
So if we want to sell, that's through procedures, uh, probably. So if either party wanted to sell to the other party, then would there, uh, opportunity for anybody?
Unless it's wrote up in the agreement, then you have first chance to buy the other out. It's just like.
Government property, that works.
We, we, for instance, when we work, where I work, is federally run, but it's state-owned. You know, if one entity was leave, the other entity has first option to buy a home, depending on how the agreement was, on that, because if you're a fifty-fifty owner, if, if we were to be a business together, and one wants to buy each other out, why would I go on the outside room if we have a contract saying that we can buy each other out before someone comes in? And if we can't come to an agreement of what to buy each other out at, then that's when, now it goes up for sale for someone else.
I know state law says that political subdivision of their property, they have to, it has to be open to the. open to the, the hard surplus number one, for the public.
Hypothetically, if somebody puts public once again into the jail business with us, they already had problems. They'll take, they'll take their money. They do. A lot of profit numbers off there. Well, I know, but I'm just, I'm saying, in this situation, this is, we're talking essentially the dissolution of the whole entity, then at that point, we're not going to be in the jail business anymore, anyway. So it's going to be if somebody wants to buy the building from us, I suppose they can vote.
But that's, that's a hurdle that has to be...
I had something to look into, to see how we have to, you know, how we can work to correct, to correctly, you know, do what we want to do with the physical building. And if we can't, then we'll, we'll make it work, and we have to make it work.
But we should, we should look into that, because I can imagine that becoming an incredible headache very quickly. Right? If you ever say the city decided, we want to be done, right? We want to be bought out, and you do have to put it up to the public, you could end up in a situation where the county still wanted to run the jail, but now we've got a co-owner, or, or we are also forced to sell our half, so the entire thing has to go. So you either end up being half owner with somebody that you never signed a agreement with, or you have to sell an asset that you might want to hold on to. I don't think either of those are desirable options. We probably should know exactly what the letter of the law is, respect to that.
And a good share of that facility, I think, was purchased on federal funds. That was granted at the time. Grants used to be pretty untifled in for brick and mortar back in the seventies. And there may be some, usually they expire after a while, right? Usually there's a tight period on things like that, but that would all have to be investigated and figured out.
I mean, if you could dissolve it, sell something off from the federal grant?
They're, generally, they're tied after 30 years, obviously, we're talking 48 years, honestly.
I mean, I guess it's possible.
I think you had, what I was thinking, Rob, you were, was there some special assessments that would come onto the...
Well, right, so, yeah, like, because there's going to be construction on all, so we were issued a special assessment for that construction for the property there. So, I mean, that would be part of this, like, who's responsible for that then? You know, if we're not the owners, or, you know, that would need to be established in whatever the agreement is for those types of things.
Yeah, I don't know if that's happened, anybody got experience with that? Has there ever been any special assessments in that area that anybody remembers? Do we just play it out like any normal residential, resident would do, or do we make some kind of adjustments or exception? I don't know.
I had one other little thing I wrote down here. I know the rent thing does seem kind of be like an oxymoron. We're, we own the building, we're paying rent. I don't know if that's just a failure on budgeting. I mean, would rent actually have to be in there? If the rent wasn't in there, it would just be filtered into the other bits of the budget, you know? So is that just something that gets underneath everybody's saddle that we're paying rent? Because basically, it's just an income line on a budget that could probably be factored in somewhere else. I don't know when the rent actually started, it seems kind of silly, but I don't know how anybody else feels about it. Is it necessary or not?
Does anybody know when the rent didn't start?
Day one, I think. They built it because they didn't have any source of income.
Day one?
I'm, I was looking through this, I don't see it, but I'm sure that's what, saw it somewhere, that, because, you know, when they started, they didn't have any, you know, they're brand new, didn't have any incarcerations, didn't have anything, so they needed source of income.
Or the city started paying that down.
That's my understanding, but I, I haven't seen it written, but I've been told that.
Like I say, I don't know if that's a big sticky factor for anybody, but, I mean, it's come up many times, why did we pay rent on the building we own?
If we wouldn't pay rent, then the cost of operating would split up amongst all entities.
That's the only way to end up doing it, yeah.
I guess I sort of agree with you on that, Dale, it's kind of six in one, half dozen in the other, right? You're paying that portion very likely, no matter what line item you put it under. It becomes usage fees, or it becomes whatever, I mean...
It's a shell game.
Yeah, yeah, just if somebody has a severe taste about it, we can make it go away. You're just going to taste it a little later somewhere else. I'm thinking the, I don't know what the work process was, but more than likely, it comes down to the fact that the other counties that are part of the entity aren't utilizing the building in that way. So it made sense for the city and the county to pay a portion since we were utilizing the building, even though we owned it, since we were actually using the square footage. Plus, at the same time, they, you know, you said highway patrol and things like that in there too. So I suppose it was just a structure of, you know, if Nelson County wanted to use the building and use a corner, they would have to pay rent too. You know, I would assume that's how they structured it. I can't say that, I'm sort of not... But I mean, yeah, it's a shell game. I mean, if you pull the rent, basically, take the $75 and turn it into $85 or $95, I mean, that's all around you. It's just going to be more a little bit differently.
I think it's an ideal spot for the sheriff to bark at, isn't it?
Is there, is there currently anything in the April 21st draft of the joint powers agreement that needs to be changed before we leave here today between the city and county?
That would be the operational management of the facility agreement.
Joint Powers Agreement for the Establishment and Operations of Lake Region Law Enforcement Center.
There's a lot to go back to, even if you take a look at page four, 4.8, 4, review and comment, approve any capital improvements before they're developed and submitted by the director. That would be the board. So that would be a major change. And a review and provide general oversight for all contracts and agreements necessary to operate, limits to annual budget, and have the budgets developed by the LAC. But there are things in there that dispose of, this is an example, 4.8, 1.4, dot budgets, retain personnel, that type of thing, which is all fine, but then it gets down to dispose of real and personal property. And that would take a process. And there again, who owns the property becomes an issue. And then, of course, the board sets the budget. And, you know, what happened to us, we had a $28,000 increase in rent. I mean, now that makes, you take notice, $28,000 increase in rent for the city, one year. And we had no say in, basically, the commission as a whole. And, you know, can two commissioners obligate the whole city and our minister's or the county? I mean, I would say it's going to take action of the full commission, start looking expenses like that, and a number of things like that. You have a saying over here about if there's excess money collected, that stays with the LAC board, if there's a shortage, then we have to make up the difference. I think that has to be identified much closer. You know, how much, what is the shortage? What do they get? $2 million to keep this stack, you know, this keep, putting the money away? A number of issues like that. And then they submit a budget, the days tell us what they want, and we have to write a check. So there's no control over the budget for, if we go into an agreement like this here, we have no control over that, speaking of... They've got, which kind of surprised me, says the director shall provide the board with financial reports on at least a quarterly basis. I realize they use the word "at least," but it should be on a monthly basis, at least. Quarterly basis for, you know, financial reports, that's the whole news. And I mean, there's just a number of things like that that need, you know, a lot of discussion to clean up.
If you have a list of things that you would like to see changed or recommendations on there, that's kind of where we're at in this process, is for everyone to review it, to get their opinions and present them, so then we can look at those and make the changes that you made.
See, and once we identify capital assets, says they should be kept, beheld in the name of the LR LAC, which is fine, once we identify what's capital asset, what's a maintenance item. As all capital assets and equipment acquisitions for the LAC shall be made according to purchasing policies approved by the board, where appropriate, director shall prepare good specifications except assets owned by the member or entity, all equipment, furniture, facilities, where those shall be purchased and held in the name of the LR LAC, and shall become property of the LAC. And I think it depends on how we work out, again, capital is a big, that's a big item.
Mr. Chairman, can I address a few of those questions from the mayor?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. This document was drafted with the concept that the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center Board would be an independent body with representation from its members. When it speaks in terms of sale of real property and personal property, that contemplated not so much what property exists today, but what may be acquired in the future by that independent body. And this is modeled after several joint powers agreements throughout the state, for various reasons, everything from 911 to flood control projects to other types of joint powers activities. But it is a little bit different than what we have today. This document is based on premise that the Law Enforcement Center Board would be its primary decision maker, its governing body. The representatives from the various entities make up that board. So to the extent that we're looking at this document and talking about capital improvements and so forth, this was on the assumption that the issues regarding current ownership had already been resolved. And I understand how we've got to this point, and what the old documents say, but this contemplated moving forward and providing a little more autonomy to the Law Enforcement Center. If that's not the direction the members want to go, then this document may not be reflective of where you want it to go, or what you would like to do. There are a number of jails nationally that don't have multiple board members like this. They have a board membership, and everyone who brings in prisoners gets basically charged a daily fee. We're trying to get a side of that type of concept as well. But just to give you, again, keep in mind that this is purely a draft. We were looking for, hoping that people will come back with information. And there are changes to be made in this document, and it's not ready to be adopted. There are some incorrect citations and the like in the document. It was intended to be, it's gone through several different iterations, looked at by the Law Enforcement Center Board, but it's now intended to be at the point where we can go out publicly and make your comments, which is very sort of sad to the members as well.
Another question. You said this is based off of other LACs, right?
Not necessarily LACs, a number of different joint powers agreements.
Okay, joint power agreements, how many of them that you took this off of are owned by the city and the county, or are they probably owned by the LAC themselves?
Well, I can tell you, one of the documents I looked at was the 911 agreement in Grand Forks, in which the 911 center is housed in a building owned by the city of Grand Forks, but much of the equipment is actually provided by Grand Forks County. It also is based pretty heavily upon a new agreement out of Fargo for their flood control project, in which they are doing joint acquisitions of real estate, other properties. We did look at a couple of jail agreements, I don't remember which counties they were.
Mackenzie.
Mackenzie County. But we looked at, there are flood control agreements, there are agreements for 911, jail agreements, we have some other joint operating agreements where communities are sharing resources in water treatment and the wastewater. So I tried to look at a pretty broad concept. Again, we were starting from the assumption that the issues concerning ownership of existing land had already been resolved.
So who all had input on part of this? You got it, just you and Rob, or?
There were members of the board that were involved in the discussion, yeah.
I fancy this up, Rob. Well, it does change the whole concept of how the center operates. They become owners, basically.
They become an independent donor.
Independent operation, and we are kind of servant to their wishes. Whatever they want, they build us.
You would be a user of the jail or...
Yes. So it really changes the concept of how this was developed years ago.
I don't disagree. And the only concern I had when I reviewed the documents that are in place, there's an awful lot that isn't addressed. For example, if there are issues of liability at the jail that relate to the facility itself, who's responsible for that liability? Is it the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center? Is it Ramsey County? Is it the city of Devil's Lake? Or is it a combination? Those are some things that back in my mind that I kept looking at and trying to create a situation in which there was clear responsibility for conduct, not only within the operations of the Law Enforcement Center, but the plant itself.
And the DRF is always covered, personal insurance, your fund is always covered, LAC for liability.
Well, I understand that, but the rating for that policy then is a responsibility of the Law Enforcement Center, but what happens if the city is named in the next loss, or the county is named in the next loss? The issue of insurance doesn't seem to be a concern, as long as we got to preserve them.
You know, it used to be, back in the seventies, when the LAC was built, regional law enforcement centers were the buzzword. That was the future of, everybody should be doing that. And they were a number of bills. Today, there's what, two true, all southwest, multi?
Yeah, southwest, multi.
And Lake Region are both the two true regional facilities. The rest are all county-owned, contracted with other counties.
Mackenzie's now recently just changed.
So, I mean, but it used to really be cool. Maybe it's not so cool anymore, maybe it doesn't work so well.
I do think, from my perspective, if, if we were going to sort of sign over, if you sign over all oversight, or at least direct oversight with the city and the county to an independent body, and I'm not making necessarily a judgment at this time on whether or not it's a good idea, but at minimum, I think it would be really nice to see an inventory, because there have been a lot of things that have been purchased over the years, to know exactly what this new, more independent LAC would then get ownership of. And I think, I think it would be reasonable to take an inventory of everything that is in the Law Enforcement Center.
Well, it shouldn't be hard to do that, because there's got to be a depreciation schedule somewhere that should be all up to date.
And that's another thing, too, because on our depreciation schedule, is all that property, is the building? That's all on the LAC depreciation.
Well, they use, of course, they state-owned, reduce it from their houses.
But if we did go that way, it would be nice to know exactly what it was we were signing over ownership to an independent body about. I think it'd be very difficult to be sitting in our shoes and sign over property that should potentially belong to the city and the county to it as new independent entity, without at least knowing what we're signing.
So if that would get turned over to Ramsey County Jail, does the sheriff run it then, or who runs it?
You're saying if, if the city no longer wanted to, you'd force of it?
Does that mean the statement that the city will run it?
The county, well, the county always has the statutory responsibility for running a jail.
So these LACs are the thing of the past, maybe we should move it into the future, and to the same, not LAC, but whatever, turn it to Ramsey County Jail.
I mean, in a lot of counties, I shouldn't say, like Cass County, for instance, the sheriff is technically in charge of the jail, but he has to jail the administrator, you know? That's what happens in some places, I believe. Sheriff doesn't have the time to run the jail while he's trying to run his apartments, his corporations.
The city went out, you're asking this question the second time, it's up to you. I put it in your ballpark, but I'm not making that decision. I don't believe the city, people of the city of Devil's Lake went out of that jail. I don't believe that.
We have a conflict here, we got bail and chain... We have a conflict here, we got bail and Shane that are on board. Okay, they're supposed to put numbers together for the L E C to make profit, but yet they're elected by the city of Devil's Lake to make sure that they don't overspend our money also. The same way because of Ramsey County, it's the same thing. Nelson County, same thing, I know, I know, it's the same thing.
Seems that everybody else understands that it's cost money to operate this entity these days. In the past, it didn't cost money because it was lucrative that we all got a free ride. Now going forward, if there is no free ride, we got to start paying. And we seem to be the only ones that have heartache paying. Everybody else seems to be fine with knowing that acknowledging the fact that it's going to cost money. That's, that's where the problem is. And if Ramsey County takes it over, we're still not going to have any voice in it.
It'd be nice to see some type of agreement that other counties have with, let's say, Stetson County. And they do some incarcerations for foster, for other companies. But you know what their agreement is, they have to have some catch. They have to have some safety in that building. Maybe it's just, maybe it's just a per day rate, maybe it's $110 per day, I don't know.
There were those little conversations with Pierce County and Connor County. Connor going to Pierce County, that they're going to be the red, that they're going to have to sort of use it, charging some kind of a user fee. Same thing happened with Connor County went to Cavalier for their 911. They thought they're just going to get on board for their collection dollars. Then they found out that, sorry, that isn't going to happen, you're going to start paying us a user fee for the month because it's costing us more to operate than, than what we're getting from you for your donation. So I mean, it's, yeah, for the case, yeah. But, but yeah, like I say, it's just, it's an ugly thing, but like I say, in the past, it paid for itself and above that, and now it's, the case isn't there anymore. I mean, it's just, being involved as long as I have, it just, it seems like there's more and more put on the jail all the time and the revenue isn't there to pay for it. So somebody's got to pay for it, whether it be the jail or 911.
Since I've been on the Law Enforcement Center Board, I've seen the state oversight, the DOC, looking over our shoulder, probably increase 500, 800%. I mean, I listened to an hour meeting the other day, Tuesday, and the intercom system and the camera system we put in there, Dale? The person that was giving us our report referenced the cameras. I went back and watched the cameras and I could see officers not doing things right. So we not only had thought about that yesterday, I thought, we had not only helping ourselves with intercom and the camera system, don't get me wrong there, great improvement at the jail, great. I mean, massive improvement. But we also helped them oversee us. So that's why it's costing more money, Howard's prisoners. And have oversight and make sure things are being done. Another thing I thought about yesterday, we're not only at jail out there. We're on, how many do we get on watch, suicide watch at a time? Five, six?
We don't have the whole L E C space, but.
On suicide watch, and we got to watch them. And they got cameras on there and they know how often we go over.
If they wanted to verify that we're doing what we're signing up on, they could verify that, they can check it out. Not if you're just pencil whipping it.
And he referenced that, the cameras. So we helped ourselves, but we helped them give us more oversight, which is fine. I'm not against oversight at all. Do it right, do it right. So that's another expensive word, incurate at the jail. You know, we, mental health, mental health. We're not equipped to take care of mental health situations in the jail. We're not. Do we have anybody, any agency locally that can help us with this? No.
Very limited.
Very limited. They got limited staff.
I think, I think that's the thing we're talking about from the standpoint of going forward. I mean, this isn't going to get any cheaper.
No, not at all.
I mean, in all honesty, there's things we should be doing that to make our services better and more efficient for what we're attempting to do and it's going to cost more money. It just is, that's the problem that I got.
What was the term you used yesterday, Rob, at the meeting? Minimal, for, for what we're paying now is to achieve minimal standards. It's not horrible, but we're achieving minimal standards and just getting by. We're actually almost shooting ourselves in the foot by trying to generate revenue at being understaffed, which is sooner or later going to catch up to you. Right now, we're, we're generating revenue and we're starting to look good, but we found out that we're, that's not as profitable as you might think because when you underachieve and increase your revenue, it's going to catch up to you and you're going to pay for it. So that's where we're at now, type of thing. It's a vicious circle.
It's not going to get cheaper.
No, it's, you know, we've talked about, Rob told us, having staffing issues in terms of, you know, attracting good, good people to work and things like that. I mean, that's going to cost more money in the future too. And it's just.
So, city's got to make their mind up, I guess.
And what do we accomplish if we say it's Ramsey County? What do we accomplish then? I mean, what, what would, what would we be, I don't even have a thought on that. What would, what would that do for us? It would get us, we still got to meet our financial obligations, everything. It may just be called, the city would no longer be part of the board? Is that what you're thinking, Jack?
Well, we could still have somebody on the board, just more than if you had a joint power agreement that way. Just like Nelson County, you know, you still have to have somebody on the board. With the power of.
So we wouldn't even have to have a discussion about the assets or anything? It would just be, everything is Ramsey County's personal property and the city would not have any, any feeling to that? That, that conversation would be done? We don't need to come up with a joint power agreement between the city and the county because we gave it back to the county? Would that be the thought there?
What you'd be getting.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
Adam, you got a favor to say something?
Well, I was just going to ask Mr. Swanson, the attorney, is there anything currently in the 1973 agreement and the amendments going forward that has anything to do with dissolution?
Yeah. Not being very much detailed. And what happened is the original agreement only contemplated the city and the county. And then as years went on, they've added, as we provide services, arrangements to other entities. Then just added on. And that was kind of the emphasis, was put everything into one document and then out of the world. Okay. But I think the mayor made a comment that in the past we looked at regional jails and now that hasn't worked out. And some of that's because of the change in populations. So it's been the change in crime centers, crime locations, type of crimes. If you were to look at the jail in Grand Forks, they charge a daily rate, whether it's to the city or to El Fredo or Mannville or any of the aligned cities. Whoever is the responsible entity for bringing that prisoner in, that starts the pot run. And then you get into the issue of day of hearing, then at 10:30 at night, is that a charge for a day? Is that part of a day? Those types of issues come up on how you calculate the day rate. That's, that's an entirely different model to speak, and that's what Cass County uses. Because of day rate. We did look, I should say, I looked, I looked at agreements in a number of different states as well. Washington, Idaho, a couple of states, Wyoming, Maine. There's been a transition over the years. Because jails at one time were living on federal dollars to a very large extent. And there wasn't a lot of litigation, there weren't a lot of capital improvements to jails. As federal standards have increased, they had to do improvements as state standards increased. They had to do improvements. And I think it's been made a common couple of times, jails aren't money makers anymore. And it's absolute, it's. So if we went down the wrong direction on drafting this agreement, which I don't think we did, but I think it's a different type of agreement than perhaps the city is contemplating because it starts from a different position. But it was really intended to give the board there the responsibility for the operations of not only the facility, but of the internal activity.
And with that being said, if every permission that's involved had to have pre-approval for anything, we'd never get anywhere. It's difficult with the people that are on the board. It's not difficult, but we have discussions, we try to think things through as clearly as we can to accomplish something. But if everybody had to go back to their board and say, we need your approval, we need your approval, we need your approval, we're never going to accomplish anything, in my opinion.
So do we want to come back with some questions? Be answered on this? List of changes?
Yeah, if so, and if we put a deadline on it. Let's have it in, within two weeks or something because it seems like we've been working on this for so long. It'd be nice to just get it done.
Because we need to get the overall joint power agreements done as well. And this one has to come in first, right?
Yeah, the, the city and the county one has to come in first. That'll lay some, some paving stones for the, the other L E C or L E C.
It also has to be agreed upon, that, you know, this whole change of ownership, basically, is what you're looking at. If that's what the ultimate goal is, or is it to continue to operate as it is under a joint powers?
Well, from my perspective, I'd still like to see it an inventory because I think that informs both, both joint powers agreement, you know, who owns what and under the proposal, who, what is going to own what specifically, right? Not, not just sort of in this hypothetical ether. It would be nice to have a, a whole line item. Here are the things that if this were put in place, this new quasi-independent law enforcement center now is going to be the direct owner of all of these things. And the city and the county will retain ownership of these things, right? I, I just, I think it would be helpful because otherwise it's, it's hard to even know what you're signing over.
I think for both parties' sake, that would make sense. If I was in the business with another person, I want to know what I own. You'd want to know what you own. And if you go broke, you have to, you owe a million dollars. Now you got to sell at an auction sale and you only get 250. You both got to come up with some money. So you're going to want to know who owns what.
And if, and if the city has any intention, and it doesn't necessarily sound to me like it is, but of, of leaving Ramsey County with physical ownership of the building, I believe you guys are going to want to know exactly what you're leaving Ramsey County to, right? I just, I just think it would be good to have a, an inventory of everything that's there so that we know what we're talking about specific.
Rob's taking notes.
Well, I think another action point has to be, what does a contract look like? If you, if Ramsey County owned the facility and the, how the member or other people who use it, what say they have in the operation, probably none. But there's got to be a safety net, otherwise you could set it per day rate of $200 a day as owners and everybody else is screwed.
Well, but if we, if we sign this agreement, the L E C could do that to every member?
No, because we have, if you look at the original agreement, this didn't supersede anything. It hasn't been approved, doesn't supersede anything. It says in there that the L E C shall submit a budget to the city and the county and they approve the budget, the city and the county.
No, but under this new agreement.
Yeah, under the new one, it's not, that hasn't been voted on.
I know that, I know, I know, I know.
So as of today, as we speak right now today, that's, that's what it is. The L E C is supposed to approve, not the L E C, L E C board approves a budget, submits it to the city for approval and to the county for approval.
Right.
Until that's done, it's not a budget. That's not how it has been done. They've been doing the budget, we get the bill, county gets the bill. That's all it's been done lately, right or wrong?
That's totally right.
So, I mean, and what, there has to be some type of a safety net built in to people who use the facility, no matter who the owner is, that, you know, you can, you're not just be users and do whatever you want to do and all of a sudden charge 200, 250 dollars a day for inmates and you have no choice, you're stuck. If you want to put an inmate, here's going to cost you 200 bucks a day. And that political subdivision wouldn't have any, any say in it. Other than the contract maybe with somebody else down the road, but then you have other issues. So I mean, there's got to be in these agreements, and Howard probably knows this some, but there's got to be some safety net built in for, for communities, political subs that use that facility. I don't know what that is, but there's got to be something. Because a facility would be crazy, a political subdivision would be crazy to sign a document that you were completely at the mercy of that correctional facility. I don't care where it's at, whether it's Grand Forks, Fargo, Minot, doesn't matter. Because there's got to be some type of a, a safety net built in for that community.
So is it the city's, I guess now I got to turn that question back to you again, Mr. Mayor. Is it the city's intention to, to need that in place because it intends to transition the property directly over to the county?
We haven't talked about it, other than, you know, this round here, it's never been brought up at a city commission.
Well, and I have a question about the budget. Because Rob's been discussing the budget at the L E C meeting since April. Hey, Dale, I'm assuming that you and Shane go back to the city commission and review those. Rob has come to the county at least twice to discuss the preliminary budgets. So it's not like we get a bill and we forced to pay it. And wasn't it last year that you reduced what, what the L E C's budget was proposing to the city?
It was left the same at the L E C side, but the city budgeted less. And our personal budget, knowing the fact that a few things were going to be less than were on the L E C budget. Incarceration, right? We knew that we were going to hit that mark, so we were definitely wrong there, but I think that was our whole concept. The L E C budgeted like 420,000 from the city. We budgeted 320,000 on our side. And the thought was, if we get to the point where those two things don't work out, we'll have to deal with it, make a budget exception or something like that. So, and to your point about, I don't think we came to the city and presented any preliminary.
Yeah, I'd like to question to be brought to the agenda on the June 7th meeting to discuss it. Was told we were going to wait until it was part of the special review.
And that's typically, but like Dick said, in the past, it's been, we haven't changed our, our bylaws or whatever in the past to try to make sure we got it to the city on time. And unfortunately this year again, we're going to be late to the table. Every, every year we plan on getting it there earlier because the city meets a month earlier in the county to approve budgets and we, we haven't made it again. I don't know, is it kind of like that fear of going to the dentist, maybe? You procrastinate till, because you know it's going to hurt?
Well, no.
Or it just hasn't worked out?
Well, no, that's, I mean, the efforts come in front of the commission, I just do what I'm approving.
Oh, okay, for the, okay, for the last, yeah.
Because every, it'll be that first meeting in June, every year, when I plan on coming around to the different commissions, I've hit every other commission already, to present what we've got for preliminary budget so that they then directly can be given to their, I, I asked for feedback right there, looking for feedback as far as if there's something that they know that they, that they're going to require in regards to the budget or if they have recommendations regarding the budget. And then to give guidance to their representatives on our commission so that we can be, in our June meeting, that we can then make a decision or hopefully approve the budget so that it's approved by that July person. You know, but we're, you know, the information is being provided to my board members and we're, we started talking budget actually in March of this year and that's generally going to be when we're going to be started to talk about it, to make sure we meet those deadlines.
So can we come back in a couple of weeks with some changes with this? Or recommended changes from the city, from the county on the operational joint powers? Is that enough time? Is it? Is that enough time? Is it?
I guess I think it's enough time, but I don't want anybody else. But does it still go back to getting the city and the county one resolved? Is that, is that the biggest internal, we gotta get over the city and the county one, right before the joint powers can be properly entered?
Well, could we reconvene this meeting with, in, in a month, and to have recommended changes from both entities, or? Would that be workable, doable?
We would be bringing recommended changes to both this hypothetical joint powers agreement and recommendations and thoughts on a specific document between the city and the county for, for ownership of the building, both of those, is what we have at hand to look at. Is that, am I understanding that right?
I think so.
I'm working with Howard to try and get some data and talk.
Okay. Would it, would it be possible to get it into the authority then, in that time? Just so that, you know, at that meeting, I can look at it if nobody else wants to come. So who specific, who would you want with the senate? Do we have Son of Candy to distribute all for your calling, and, uh, Harry or Linda to send it all to you, uh, your commission?
I think that makes sense, because they're, they're, I know.
It'll work? Jack?
It'll work.
Mayor?
Yep.
But do we wanna set a date and a time?
Is that a month, Jack? When the three, next two meetings in July, on that?
Six is the first two meetings in July, so we need a six. Uh, next week would probably be possible. Fourteen, fifteen, so, next thing, fifteen would be the basic, the month of today.
The LAC meets the 21st, you look like they haven't done before that one way.
No.
It was good.
Members of the city, does either the 15th or the 14th of July work better for you all?
Uh, that doesn't work for me.
Does it?
Uh, 16th would work. Uh, 12th would work.
12th would be the meeting?
July?
Yeah.
The fifth would be a holiday, pretty fast.
So we'd have a meeting on the 6th?
So you'd meet the same day we would?
Yeah.
The 6th?
Yeah. That give us, they meet on the 6th, we meet on the 6th.
That Thursday? That give us enough time? How about the 16th then? Do we have problems with the 16th?
16th.
16th work for it, Eddie?
Make a motion that we reconvene this body, uh, at 8:30 AM on 16th July.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time?
Same time?
Yeah. 8:30, Friday, July 16th. All right. And then if there's anything else we need to address, we can address it at that time, given our agenda. Get our proposed changes to our attorneys and let them take a look at it.
You wanna work to you, or just?
Yeah.
Check that thing. You wanna hear the cow? So later?